One clock, and we call BD to order. Please prepare for pledge.
White believe in the of the United States of America and to be really valid for which is one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start with the budget presentation with Mrs. Feldman.
Good evening. Welcome to the next chapter of the budget. We're going to talk about revenue, state aid, and the New York State cap, tax cap calculation for the 2324 school year. We're going to start, we're going to do a little history on foundation aid. We're going to talk about expense driven aids, excess cost aids, and building it. So in 2007, eight, a lawsuit was lost by New York State and the creation of foundation aid occurred. Foundation aid in theory was supposed to make sure that all students had same, the same access to resources, regardless of where they lived or the wealth of their community. In 2008, the phase in was halted due to an economic downturn. Fast forward to 2022, as a result of yet another lawsuit, Governor Hokel committed to fully implement the formulas which have been running in the background since its implementation. This is Eden's last year for full implementation. We will get what the foundation aid calculation is for our district in 2324, but we will not receive the 16 years of aid, or 14 years of aid that we did not, that we lost over those years at this point. And foundation aid for a school district is the only aid that is not restricted. In other words, it's local use, the local Board of Education determines how that aid is spent. Well, new this year, Governor Hokel is forced, wants to force use of 100,000 of this restoration aid for I high-impact tutoring for grades three through eight. So in 2021, Eden received 7.3 million for foundation aid. 2122 went up to 7.6, 2223 went up to 8 million, and there's a huge jump in 2324, 976,000 to 8,996,000 dollars. But we have to remember, this year is the last year we can expect to see an aid increase of this large of an amount. Now we're going to talk about our expense-driven aids. Expense-driven aids come to the district in two ways. Some of them are, we are repaid at certain percentage levels on what we spent last year, and some of them are based on student enrollment. For example, technology hardware, we received $24.20 per student. For the library, we received $6.25 per student. Software aid is $14.98 per student, and textbook aid is $58.25 per student. So when we look at our, we're going to go back to our expense-driven of our BOSEs. In 2021, we were reimbursed 1,057, $87 of the prior year's expenses that we spent at BOSEs. 2122, it went to 1,194,000. 2223 was 1.2 million, and this year on the governor's runs is projected to go down a little, 1,196,000. Our technology aid of $24.20 per student went from 21,790 to 21,205, down to 21,058, back up to 21,115. You can see as our attendance of our students changes, so do our aid. So our software, library, and textbook gate, $79.48 in total per student, went from 109,000 to 105, stayed pretty stable at 105 and went up to 106,000. Transportation aid went from 1.4 million to 1.5 to 1.6, up to 1.8 million. That's almost to be expected if you've been to the gas pumps lately because the cost of fuel is ever increasing, along with other things, and of course, we're reimbursed for this year's expenses next year. So our state aid went from 2.6 million in these areas to 2.8 in 2122, and 2223 went up to 3 million, and the governor's run says it's up to 3.1 million dollars. Access cost aid. Access cost aid is how the state reimburses us for expensive students who have special needs. So our special education students, which are required to be in the least restrictive environment. Some are district, are educated in the district or BOSEs or another district that may have a program for them, and some of them are educated at non-for-profit similar to Summit. So our high access cost aid on our students in 2021 was 216,000. 2122 was 299,000. 2223 was up to 241,000, and in 2324, it's projected to be at 303,000. So as you can see, as our students change, so does our reimbursement. Our private access cost state went from 211,000 to 234,000 in 2122, to 397,000 in 2223, up to 422,000 in 2324. All while the district maintains keeping these students in the least restrictive environment for their education. Building aid. So when we do a capital project like the one that gave us this beautiful library, we get reimbursed from the state over 15 years. We get reimbursed for our bonding, which is our mortgage payment. So 78.3 cents of every dollar that was spent, is spent on a capital project, we get back in state aid from the state to help us afford to keep our facilities safe, clean, and a welcoming environment. So in 2021, we received a little over 2 million. 2122, 2.1 million. We had a drop-off of some of our expenses in 2223, so it went down to 1.6 million, and it's staying very close to 1.6 million in the governor's runs for 2324. The district has not yet received any building aid on the current project and will not receive building aid until the project is completed and all the paperwork has been submitted to the state. So our overall of the state aid is, 2223, we received 13,286,629. The governor's runs proposed that we will receive 14,487,275 or a 9.04% increase to 1,246,460. Any questions so far?
Mrs. Feldman, a quick question. Go back to slide three, I think it was, or 8.9 million was. So projecting out 2425, is the 8.9 the base, or is the base back to 2022 number of like 8 million?
The base will stay at the 8.9.
Okay, so it's not like that large lump sum that the governor's giving us is going to like be subtracted the following year?
That's correct, but it will not receive another 976,000 dollars.
But it's not like we will go back, though?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, what you're seeing there, that 7.6 million to the 8 million to the 8.99 is a two-year phase in of the foundation aid. And that, again, as Mrs. Feldman pointed out, was a result of a lawsuit and Governor Hokel deciding to make districts whole. And we are, we will be fully funded at the current foundation aid formula at the 8.996 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we ready to move on? Now we're going to talk about the property tax cap calculation. So this is the part where 2% tax cap is an added 2% tax cap. 2% is a figure in a multiple-step calculation. So we're going to talk about that and try to explain it a little bit better than everyone's general understanding. So first thing that this board has to know is I have to report your decision at the end of the slides to New York State by March 1st. We're going to talk about the terminology for the property tax cap. We're going to talk about capital exclusions, the property tax cap calculation. We're going to go through it line by line, and we're going to talk about the tax levy threshold. So the first thing we're going to talk about is the tax-based growth factor. It's given to us by the New York State Office of Real Property Tax Service, and it represents new buildings in our district. So it's not like if I put a new roof on my house or a kitchen in my house, remodel my kitchen, that doesn't come into effect. But if I build a new home or a new shop, then that factors into this .0082. Then there's an allowable levy growth factor. So the rule is that the levy growth factor will be the lesser of 2% or the Consumer Price Index. So the 2324 Consumer Price Index for the tax cap is 8%. So we are, that is what they say inflation is. So now we are stuck with the 2% factor, which is 6% less than the average CPI index. Excuse me. So now we're going to talk about payment in lieu of taxes pilots. They're negotiated by the Erie County Industrial Development Agency. They reduce property taxes typically up to 10 years on approved new businesses to allow them to get a foothold before they're at full property taxes. We anticipate $500 in pilots this year because of the solar farm and the education, it was part of the educational contribution that the board approved. So there'll be $500 a year. This is new for Eden. We'll have available carryover from last year, which was 27,819. That's money that we could have levied last year, but we didn't. So our 2223 for capital exclusion amounts last year was zero. This year it's 692,316. It's a factor we'll use later on. Now we're going to get into how the formula works. The tax-based growth factor of .0082 is multiplied times a prior year tax levy of 15,460,541 to give us the growth factor of 15,587,318. We did not have any pilots receivable last year, so there's nothing to add. We did not have any prior year exemptions for torts and judgments or for a capital exclusion. So our adjusted prior year levy is now 15,587,318. That adjusted levy is now multiplied times our 2% growth factor. So now we're up to 15,899,640 that is eligible for levy. We have to reduce that by the $500 that we know we're getting for a payment in lieu of taxes. And then we can add our available carryover of 27,819 to it. And our tax levy limit before exemptions is 15,926,383. From that, we add any current year exclusions, torts and judgments, which we have none. The ERS and TRS retirement exemptions are for if their rate that the district pays to fund to New York State for funding the retirement systems is increased greater than 2%. That did not occur this year, so there's zero increase there. But we do have a local levy capital share of 692,316 we can add. So our total levy threshold is 16,618,699. Our allowable increase in dollars would be 1,158,158 or a 7.5% levy increase. That's our maximum that we can go out to the taxpayers for and still have it approved with a simple majority of 50% plus one. So what I really need to know tonight from the Board of Education is, do you plan to levy more than 7.5%? A levy higher than 16,618,699. This is a preliminary whether or not you intend to, what New York State is trying to determine here is do we need a simple majority of 50% plus one or super majority of two-thirds? So now is the time that I need some input back from the board.
So let's open it up the questions first before we ask people to weigh in on a, on a decision.
So go back a couple of slides, Mrs. Feldman. The, yeah, that one right there. One more, one more forward. So this local capital levy share, is that something that's going to be in the calculations for years to come based on capital projects?
That will get reduced next year, and a new number will appear. So it will depend on if that number goes up or down.
But, but we'll be seeing
That is typically in there, yes.
Okay, but we didn't have it last year.
Correct, because we had debt fall off and then
Right, so we're in that mode right now, capital projects for quite some time, so, okay, that's knowing what 2425 is going to look like, you know, there'll be a number there, so.
Does everyone understand what that 7.5% represents? Okay, so the maximum you could ask the taxpayers to increase their, their school taxes is 7.5%.
With a simple majority.
With a simple majority, 50, 50% plus one.
So normally, everybody thinks it's 2%, but this year with the calculations, it's 7.5 that we could go out for.
Now, I want to be clear for those in the audience, this doesn't mean that tonight is not the night where, where you decide what, what we may ask for, okay? It's just to decide, are we going to go above that number?
The simple reason for that is so New York State knows whether to monitor our tax vote of whether it's 50% plus one or two-thirds super majority. That's really the whole point of this entire exercise is for the state to know and for us to know what percentage of the community support we need.
I mean, I can't see any reason why we would need to go over.
Absolutely not, yeah.
Yeah, I would. I would agree with Jen. I mean, that's, that's the highest number by far that we've had since I've been on the school board seven years. The seven and a half, the 2% is seven and a half, and so I can't imagine why we would even go to that number, so.
Well, the, the big kicker is, that's why I asked that question about that $600,000 number, because that's, that's the one that's majorly affecting that, that percentage, so. Knowing that it's going to be out there in the future, it's good to know that there's not a chance for a negative increase per se, negative tax cap calculation.
Not if our long-term planning is, is, is spot-on. Meaning future projects, so that we don't have that drop in debts.
Correct, like we did this past year.
Exactly. And along with that, if the state continues to hold up their end of the deal, then we should be, we should be in better shape.
So then what I'm hearing is when I submit this, I will say, no, we are not planning to exceed 7.5%. They are not asking for a decision of what we're going to go out for, but it's just for the state to know what our plan is. Because what they do is they, they then monitor the districts that are planning to exceed it more closely than those that aren't.
Yeah, correct. So based on the numbers we saw tonight, we will not be going at 7.5% or above.
Thank you.
Is there a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is the approximate position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There is a two-minute time limit.
Anybody?
So new business resignations, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of bus attendant Patty Dolus be accepted effective January 26, 2023. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Dolus for her service to the district. No, Ms. Dolus would like to stay on as a substitute.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of high school Spanish teacher Jill Keller be accepted effective July 1, 2023. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Keller for her 32 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Her letter was very beautiful.
Retirement.
I mean, yeah.
Okay. Appointments, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Brenda Bergstaller be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective February 28, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Melissa Bardo be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective January 30, 2023, and ending September 29, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Andrea Garrison, who is professionally certified in early childhood education B through two, literacy B through six, and childhood education one through six, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the elementary tenure area for a probationary period commencing on February 20, 2023, and ending on February 19, 2026, unless extended in accordance with the law. And then, I don't have to read all that, right? Salary is based upon ETA contract masters, step 12.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Savannah Gonsoarik, who is initially certified in physical education, is hereby appointed as a part-time .5 phys ed teacher effective January 30, 2023, and ending June 30, 2023. Salary is based upon ETA contracts, bachelor's, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Gillian Aguilar be appointed on probation as a cafeteria monitor effective February 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level two, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sarah O'Brien, who is initially certified in early childhood education B through two, in childhood education one through six, be appointed as a long-term substitute elementary teacher effective February 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2023. Salary is based upon ETA contract masters, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Gordon Donnie Rogers be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective March 6, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Joseph Kushner be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March 5, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Anne McGilliguddy be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March 5, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Jamie Bukowski be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March 5, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Kara McGraw be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March 5, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Kelsey Hunter be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March 5, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Linda Actle be provisionally appointed as an assistant treasurer effective March 1, 2023. Salary is $25 per hour.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Are we doing the Board of Education? Have we skipped now? Nominations for Erie two BOSEs? Okay, there you go. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Dave Vidalry be nominated for the Erie two BOSEs Board of Education.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation routes be adjusted as per the attached spreadsheet effective January 13, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following Eden Elementary and GLP school items be declared access and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Laminator, no longer operational, wooden instrument holder. K through two amplify partially used workbooks. 12 kindergarten unit 10 workbooks. 250 listening and learning domain workbooks, units one through 10.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
And now, oh, more, okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following technology department items be declared access and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. A wood lathe ID tag, a that, standard metal lathe, large Elmo drill press, an eight-inch rackwell jointer, Walker Turner bandsaw, Daltre 10-inch Unisaw, Powermatic vertical bandsaw, and a Bridgeport vertical mill.
Second.
Any discussion? Sounds like someone's setting up a new woodshop.
I actually can explain a lot of that. I had a great conversation with Steve Jones today. A number of those pieces of equipment were donated to us in various states of use, or, or, or we were not able to use them, and we deemed the cost to, to fix them and make them operable too expensive. Some of them were just too big for the space that we have, and others are, are just at their end of life. Could you read those tag numbers again, please?
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report. I'm pleased to announce that our district received a score of no designation in the fiscal stress that was released from the New York
that was released from the New York State Comptroller, so we're doing okay fiscally. And now I want to start reminding people of what's going on. Changes for the Board of Elections. Erie County Board of Elections informed us they are going to doing an electronic poll book this year. This change will require voters to have their driver's license or voter's registration card with them for verification purposes. Any voter who does not have a driver's license or voter registration card may still complete a voter affidavit form. All voters must be residents of the district thirty days prior to the May sixteenth vote. And that's all I have for this evening.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I do have a number of things to bring to your attention. First off, in terms of the board policy, the audit that we started last year will continue in the next weeks and months. There will likely be a group of policies to either be updated or newly adopted. As always, I'll work with the administrative team and Mrs. Thomasulo and the board policy committee before any policies are brought forward for the entire board's consideration. Once again, it's just a continuation of that audit work that we started with our partnership BOCs a year ago. You you should start to familiarize yourself very quickly with something that's called two-factor authentication. That's a new requirement for all staff members and board members who access the district network. It is the identical process that's required by many banking institutions. The process requires a code be sent to a user's cell phone as an extra layer of security. The process has been in place for a few months for our administrative team, and this week, after several ramp-up weeks, it became required for all district staff. Board members will need to comply with two-factor authentication. I'm not saying that word correctly, but you know what I mean, starting in about a week or so, Mr. Watson? Okay, in about a week. Heard from the back back row. Any questions about that? Okay, are you familiar with the process? Okay.
We need to bring our cell phones to the meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, not necessarily. So when you first do, when you first set it up, a code will be sent to your phone, so you should have your phone with you when you set it up. And and you may not be asked to do it again for for several weeks or months.
So it's not every time.
It's not every time, no.
Okay.
Thank you. See, that was a that was a good question, Mr. Sutton. Thank you.
Yeah. It asked us a lot in the beginning when we started at Frontier, and then it just kind of faded off. I don't know.
Okay. I started in the summer, and I think I've had a I've had to do it twice since then. So. Okay, and it's a requirement, so. I'm happy to give you a safety update. And the district is moving forward with purchasing and installing flashing crosswalk signs at the middle and high school crosswalk. As the board and community knows, this has been a dangerous area for students who walk or bike to school. Our team is sharing plans with the town highway superintendent, and once those are approved, we'll move forward with the with the installation. And my hope, and you know how it comes with construction projects, I have a lot of hope, is that the signs are installed this spring. No, you have to push the button, push the button, and, you know, we'll we'll work on our on our side with our students to remind them to continually press that button when they cross. And, you know, hopefully that alleviates any of the any of the issues that we've had there. Correct, and also, and right, in front of Eden Elementary, there are similar signs. These will be solar powered as well. I shared with, any questions? Any more questions than that? Okay, I shared with the board, and I also put it on the the public side of of our of our agenda here, a draft of the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. You know, this, it's a, this calendar is really the best I can do at this point to meet contractual limitations and also maximize the number of days for our students and come up with those one hundred and eighty-seven staff days. It does allow for that much discussed recess day before Thanksgiving. And it it does, however, differ somewhat significantly from the Western New York regional calendar. And this board has heard me talk before about, you know, each day that we deviate from that regional calendar is the is a day of deviation for any of our students that that partake in any of those BOCs programs, whether it's it's special, special programs, or whether it's CTE programs as well. The regional calendar is interesting this year. They they are starting with two days, two superintendent days in August, and a third superintendent day. And I believe it's the fifth or sixth of September. My my dates may be off there, fifth. So they're starting with three superintendent days. First student day is the seventh. Sixth? First student day for them is the sixth. This recommendation is that we start with two superintendent days, the fifth and sixth. Our first student day is is the seventh, so we're only off by one day there. Part of the reason this is this is really important is because we have a major construction project happening in Eden Elementary this summer. As you know, all of the windows in that building are slated to be replaced. The the Eden Elementary front office will be will be completely gutted and remodeled. Eight classroom classrooms are being expanded and remodeled as well. So starting after after Labor Day, not only is it contractual obligation, but it also makes the most sense to give our construction crews as much time as possible to get that building up and ready. Any questions about that? Okay. We did receive a letter that I'm going to open here and read. Dated February seventh, twenty twenty-three, and I know the board has seen this, but I want to make sure that we reread this and put it into the record. Eden Central School Board of Education, thank you for your consideration in honoring my brother Armory Captain John J. Lavellus, a two thousand and eight Eden graduate. John loved the Eden community and wore it on his sleeve through his participation in numerous school and civic groups. John was a three-sport varsity letterman, playing soccer, basketball, and lacrosse. He also captained the lacrosse team his senior year. John was an active member of the student government, FBLA, and the Boy Scouts of America, earning the rank of Eagle Scout with Eden's Troop six zero three. John graduated from Niagara University in May two thousand and twelve and commissioned as a second lieutenant in the US Army. He served with the Second Battalion Eighty-seventh Infantry Regiment of the Tenth Mountain Division at Fort Drum, New York. As an infantry platoon leader, he completed a nine-month tour in Afghanistan, earning a Bronze Star and a Combat Infantry Badge. In May twenty fifteen, while en route to training at Fort Dix, New Jersey, the Humvee John was in was struck by a civilian vehicle. Days later, he died from injuries suffered in the accident. In addition to other community efforts, the foundation created to celebrate John's life is awarded nine thousand dollars in scholarships to Eden High Graduates since twenty sixteen. As a way to honor John and encourage students and community members to remain active, we we request you consider designating designating the Eden Central School District Fitness Center, the Captain John J. Lavellus Fitness Center. We also propose the placing of a plaque detailing John's life, along with a shadow box containing photos and personal items be displayed inside the fitness center. Signage that reads Captain John J. Lavellus Fitness Center should also be placed at the entrances. My family is deeply honored by your consideration and look forward to working with you on this project. Sincerely, Jim Lavellus, Eden CSD Class of two thousand and nine, trustee Captain John J. Lavellus Memorial Foundation. So I share that in my superintendent's report as a as a point of generating some discussion with the board. I know that there has been certainly a consensus amongst the board at determining a way to honor this 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 very honorable man who who's meant so much to the community. I I guess what I'm asking for is, how do we feel about the suggestion? Is there any any thoughts or comments?
I guess I would start off by saying, you know, the fitness center is a place where all the athletes will go to train. John was a three-sport athlete. I think gym classes are held there, so all all of the student body will eventually walk through those doors, and it's open to the community, so many community members will have an opportunity to see that. It's also right near our main entrance for winter sports, and so it'll be highlighted quite nicely. The family and his foundation are in complete support of it, and I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it accomplishes the goal of honoring his legacy and his commitment to excellence. So I think to whatever extent we can, we should fast forward a vote, not tonight, of course, but fast forward a vote and see if we can move forward with this.
Yeah, I agree. You know, we were trying to identify areas that we could could honor John. And, you know, this kind of came down to one that just made the most sense and was what's what's truly available at this point in time as well, too. Because we do have the tennis courts named on behalf of Beth Kushner, and then also William Boss Field, and then I think the baseball field, so the other option was going to be possibly the the gym, but John really didn't play a an indoor sport per se, so I think this is the best way to to honor him for, you know, not only for what he did for Eden, but for what he's done for the community, so.
Anyone else? So we'll we'll move forward. Mrs. Thomasulo and I will double check that if we have any board policy to make sure that we follow whatever protocols we have in place here. I most likely will enlist the assistance of our architect partners to help with some some design in that area. And if need be, I'll circle back with this board. Well, I will circle back with this board to share some some different options, and obviously, we should include the family as well. My guess, Mrs. Thomasulo's, the next step is probably a formal agenda item, adopting this. Okay, okay, so I'll start doing some background background work before that, just so that we can get get this moving forward. Okay. Any other questions for me? Great, thank you.
All right, student report.
Okay, so February first. February first, Eden Middle School held a literacy night where kids would tie dye shirts, play book bingo, and attend a book fair and a book swap. And then this week, there was a Be Kind Week where every day has a theme, and there would be kindness challenges, and then upstairs and downstairs, there'd be bulletin boards with pictures of kids being kind. And then this December, National Honor Society managed to raise eighty-nine blankets, and they donated them to the Saint Peter's Lutheran Church. And we managed to raise a hundred and five toys for the Toys and Tots. And that's it.
Thank you.
Well, that was great. Thank you. Okay, board report roundtable.
I'd just like to thank the technology staff and senior and junior, or senior in middle school for hosting us tonight. It's really great to see, you know, what's what the capital projects come from, you know. I think we had to redo the floors in here. Was this one of the places?
Yes.
Okay. But no, it looks great. Students, what do you guys, girls, think about the new digs, huh? Little Starbucks in the corner, maybe, or something, huh?
So we got the right vibes. Oh, make me really, really happy. I think I'm getting a little red.
No.
You think I'm kidding?
No, but thanks to to all to put it together for tonight. We appreciate it. Maybe next next meeting, we'll have lights outside the elementary school.
You just took all the good mojo right away from me. I'm gonna be out there.
Yeah. Okay, see, we're close. We were manifesting it. It's a new thing of the day.
By the time they get in, the sun will be up twenty-four hours today.
Well, we'll come back in the middle of the night, then. Extended executive session that night. All right, anything else for? Board report. Mrs. Feldman, next budget meeting, is that our next board meeting then?
Yes, the next one is on, it's a regular board meeting, and then there'll be a special community forum on the twenty-second of March at seven o'clock.
Okay. And then the meeting on the twenty-second of March, is that just where we kind of sit in the auditorium?
Nope, that's the May one.
What's the March twenty-second one that we're doing then?
That's where we talk about the scenarios that are available in the community, give some input into what they would like to see.
Okay. I may be zooming in from that one.
So March fifteenth is a regular board meeting, March twenty-second is the community forum, right, which is the budget hearing. And then from there, we move on to April eleventh. And that's the budget adoption.
Correct.
Right, and then April nineteenth will be our regular meeting, a regular business meeting. And then I believe that there's a day. Is there is there a day in May prior to?
May second is the public hearing.
May second is the public.
I'm sorry, I forgot a slide when I did my presentation.
I'm just trying to update the calendar. Twenty-second, I have to be at a Eden alumni, Eden alumni college lacrosse game that day, so.
March?
March, sorry, March.
March, sorry.
And then the thirty-first is when the state should adapt their budget if they're on time. Last year, they were not.
So that brings up a good point. And I'm sorry to extend this a little bit, but this is a, this is two years in a row that, which is very different for us in terms of billing a budget. We have the governor's runs, and historically, prior to Governor Hochul, the governor's runs were the least that we could ever expect, and it was often very, very alarming news. And then the legislature would go to work, and they'd be going back and forth and back and forth, and then at the end of March, we would finally have a good idea, the real idea, the true idea of of what our aid would be. This is unusual for us because we're pretty confident we know what we have up front. And this is two years in a row now. Part of that is because of the lawsuit that that reestablished or fully funded foundation aid. So, you know, our work now can really begin in earnest, rather than waiting to the end of March, and give you a much better idea of where we think we need to be. I was appreciative to hear that the consensus on this board is no, we're not going above seven, seven point five percent. In fact, we're not going to come close to that number, and I I agree with that and I support that. So, you know, as we go forward, our budget meetings will be much closer to what the final budget will be than what you've experienced in previous years.
So March thirty-first is when it's due. That's spring break, April first.
Yes, but we won't be meeting. That's just when the governor and the legislature are doing their stuff.
Hopefully, it's it's good news, and we don't have to.
If I call you all back, it's not good news.
Right. All right. We're good.
All right. So the next regular Board of Education meeting is March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. The Special Board of Education Meeting Budget, Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven PM in the Eden Elementary Auditorium. BOCs Annual Meeting, Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, location to be determined. And the Regular Board of Education Meeting and BOCs Component Vote Date is Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. And now that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming, everybody.